The November eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, Twalton City Council, Council meeting. Welcome everyone attending tonight. I see some faces haven't seen in a little bit. Welcome. So first thing we'll start off with is a pledge of allegiance tonight led by Council Hillier.
Good evening. If you'll place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our moments of silence for those who have lost their lives due to COVID nineteen led by Council Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. As of yesterday, the New York Times reported that we've lost four thousand six hundred and twenty people in Oregon and seven hundred and fifty-five thousand people across the United States. We have still under in our state, under ten percent capacity in both regular beds and ICU beds. And we also have over five thousand kids from five to eleven that have been vaccinated. So with with that in mind, please join me in a moment of silence for those that we've lost and are suffering due to COVID nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Brooks. That brings us to the consent agenda. No, I'm sorry, shooting ahead too far. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. Is there anyone in this Zoom meeting or at the poll center? Who has some public comments to share?
There's no public at the poll center or in the Zoom meeting.
All right. Going once, going twice. All right. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, those items are considered routine that will be adopted by one motion unless someone in council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. The consent agenda tonight only consists of one item. And that's item number one, consideration of resolution number five, five, eight, one, nap dash twenty-one. Authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County related to the coalition of communities of color racial justice project. Would anybody like that item removed from agenda, from the consent? All right, seeing none.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas read.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on those motions? All right, Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
And Council President Grimes.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye also, unanimous. Okay, moving on to special reports. Tonight, we're honored to have the annual report of the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee. And I see Brett is here and Julie is here. And Janet.
Good evening, Mayor Bubnik and members of council. I'm Julie Ludeman. I am the Recreation Manager. It is my pleasure to introduce the Chair and Vice Chair of the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee. We have Chair Janet Steiger-Carr. Here's hello Janet, and she'll be giving the presentation tonight on the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee Annual Report. And we also have in the audience Vice Chair Brett Hamilton. So I am going to share my screen and hand it over to Janet.
Thank you, Julie.
Yes, thank you. And let me just get this queued up here.
Welcome, Janet.
Thank you. There we go. Twalton Arts Advisory Committee, our annual report for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one.
Oh, there we go.
There we go. Who are we? I like this. So I am going to read it. Twalton Arts Advisory Committee's mission is to support, connect, and inspire the creation and integration of all art forms into our city's rich cultural heritage and vibrant future. We believe that involvement in the arts creates a more energetic, engaging, welcoming, livable community. Further, we believe that art itself facilitates strong communities through connection, culture, creativity, imagination, and inspiration. And this photo just to the right kind of depicts all of that, I think. Current members there. There we are in all our Zoom glory. Current members, let's see, there's Julie, there's Ross, there are Parks Liaison, myself, there is Mason, there's Dawn, there's Brett, there's our wonderful liaison, Counselor Brooks, and a member of the public down below is Razia. Not pictured are Buck Braden, Kathleen Silaway, and our student member Mahathi Shridhar. Here's what we do. We put on masks and we help paint murals. But we also have monthly meetings. We represent the Twalton Arts to the council, as we're doing right now, and to the public. We attend activities and events, just like Mason did there when he was painting. We encourage opportunities for arts recognition through the Community Enhancement Awards. We stimulate private and public support for the arts, once again with the Community Enhancement Awards, but through low various arts projects citywide. We also help to vet the artwork that comes in for a project that's not necessarily one that our committee has started. But we serve as a expert committee to help out. Our two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one accomplishments. I'd like to say first off the bat, we met via Zoom. And as artists, that's not as much fun as you guys probably can imagine yourselves, but we did it. And we came up with things to do. We have our Signal Box Art Wrap installations. We did our public mural at the community park, which was part of the psyche grant. But we helped to vet the artists for that. We lend our financial support to arts agencies, and believe me, that is a much needed commodity in these days. We have support and feedback for Parks and Recreation Equity Plan. Indeed, we voiced our acceptance of the equity plan at the last meeting. And we were told that as a Parks and Recreation Committee, it was important to have our acceptance of that equity plan so they could move forward, and we were proud to be able to do that. Moving on, one of the biggest accomplishments that we were gratefully a part of was the wonderful community mural in our community park. We were able to help vet the artists Redstone and Carlos, who were absolutely wonderful for this project. We had ninety community members assist in the painting. We had toddlers and eighty-year-old community members and everything in between. It was quite a diverse crowd. This was funded by the Washington. Can't see that. This was funded by Washington County Community Psyche Grant. And bless them for helping us out with that money. It's a wonderful thing. And I have to give major props to our amazing Julie for setting up this particular endeavor. It was huge and it was wonderful, and we are proud of it. Signal Box Wraps. Boy, I tell you, once you get started, you don't want to stop. We have one at Southwest Martinazzi, Southwest Boones Ferry, and that's artist Jan Rothenmel. The, that's not the one that's pictured in this picture. That's the one that's out front of the library. The artist Jan Rothenmel artwork, that is the first box, was part of our visual chronicles. After she found out that we were using her artwork, which was installed December of two thousand twenty, she donated another piece, which is on display at the Parks and Recreation Office. And the original that is on the box is in the poll center. The second one, which is the one that's pictured as at Southwest Martinazzi. Is it Southwest Martinazzi? And that one, I absolutely love to be able to see that one. It's it's a thank you from our heart to all of the healthcare workers at the marquee that kept their people safe during lockdown so many months thereafter. Moving on, we have arts agency support grants and Bravo and thank you to the wonderful Counselor Brooks for getting the council and thank you council for increasing that for this next year. But this past year, we were able to help out Mask and Mirror Theater Company, Wilsonville Stage in conjunction with Wilsonville Stage, which does work here in Twalton with small company called the Neighborhood Players Radio Theater Group, and to the S and A Irish Irish, excuse me, Irish Entertainment, which does a wonderful program at the Winona Grange and is very, very well attended. And our two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two goals. We want to expand the traffic signal box art program through community awareness and sponsorship opportunities. We are out in the community delving into the idea of community members sponsoring a box. We will always identify future arts programs and projects. Indeed, that's sort of in our DNA. And we will continue to support local arts programming through grants and awards and any other way that we possibly can as a committee and as individuals. And that is our two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two achievements. Thank you so very, very much for allowing us to be a part of this amazing community and for allowing us to help promote and connect with the arts in every way we can. I'm Janet Steiger-Carr, the Chair. I didn't say that. I apologize.
Not a problem. We assumed it. Thank you, Janet. That was a terrific presentation. Any questions for Janet or Brett or for Julie? Council Brooks.
I just want to say thank you to Janet, and I want to acknowledge too and to Brett for your leadership on the council, on the committee, and I want to acknowledge this is Janet's first year. We had the same Chair Buck for many, many years. There are big shoes to fill, and as you can see, Janet's doing an amazing job. She has so much enthusiasm and is a brilliant leader and also has a different, we, you know, when I first came on, everybody was really mindful in letting me know that they wanted to be a committee that goes beyond just visual arts. And Janet has a strong background in performing arts and thinking about how arts and performing arts could be utilized in our parks and our community in more diverse ways. And their leadership in diversity, equity, and inclusion, their leadership in environmental awareness raising with the storm mural, Storm Drain mural projects, and the rest has been really inspirational. So I just want to thank thank the people on all the people that serve on the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee for all their work. And they show up every month. And and I will say that it was easier during the pieces when it was in person and there were stickers than on the Zoom, but they've been able to do it. So it's just been amazing to watch the creativity and the fearless leadership too of Julie and Ross, holding it all together and and making it a platform that we can actually do with some of us that haven't used Zoom as much as others. So anyway, thank you again.
Thank you, Council Brooks.
Other questions or comments for Janet, Brett, and Julie? Council Pratt. And then Council Reyes.
Reyes was before me.
Okay, Council Reyes, then Council Pratt.
I don't know, just comments about how amazing the wrap around the those wrap things are around the city. It's just decorates your city so beautifully. And it's, I don't know, every time I look at them, and it just makes me happy to see it that way. So thank you for whoever came out with that idea. I would never really come out with some kind of idea like that. My brain doesn't work that way, but it's just beautiful. It's everything you guys do to make our city look great and integrate everyone from different cultures that represent our city. It's just really amazing. I I am also very proud to see people that join our Twalton Arts Committee. They're always so energized and have so much to give. And going beyond the visual arts like music and dance and all the other stuff that that it's run by this committee. So thank you so much. I just want to say that I love it.
Thank you. May I may I interject one segue from what you just said. We we found that with our Twalton Chronicles back, you know, the art that we had with that, that possibly some of the subject matter was not as diverse as we might be wanting the wraps to to be in our town. So we have put out a call to artists, and we will be looking at art that is much more hopefully inclusive and shows all the cultural heritage that we are so blessed to be a part of in this community. So thank you for that. I love the two wraps we did. Like I said, it's addictive.
Council Pratt.
Also wanted to thank you for us, the wraps and then the the mural at the community park. It just beautifies your city and I have, my question is, if a person, say myself, had an idea of a space where I think artwork could be really great, how do we suggest that to you? Is there a process or can I just say it right now? Because I was watching. Okay, well, I was walking the Greenway Trail and, oh, by the way, I see them pounding dirt flat on the other side of where it ends, which I was very excited about. But when you walk under the the bridge under I five there, it's like the only like kind of dark dreary part of that whole trail. The rest of it's so beautiful. So I think where the, you know, they have the rails against the underpass there in the rocks. I think it'd be so cool to do some like kind of either historical or environmentally themed project, either painting or whatever. You guys are the art creative people, but I think that would be a great idea to beautify that for their community.
No, wonderful suggestion. Yeah.
All right. Anything else for the Arts Committee? All right, again, yeah, thank you again for all your efforts throughout the years. And it was a significant effort, especially when you start doing, you know, picking pieces of art and the discussions that go that can go very long as a former member of the Arts Committee. But thank you for your all your efforts this past year and look forward to working with you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, so that brings us to general business. We have one item, general business. Consideration of resolution number five, five, eight, two, dash twenty-one, referring to the electors of the city of Twalton, the question of amending the city charter to modify a mail to modify may oral term limits in certain circumstances. So is this discussion, we just launch into this, or Sean, are you going to lead us off with something, or how are we proceeding?
Yeah, I can certainly just outline it briefly. So first, Sean Brady, City Attorney. So at the last council meeting, we brought to work session. Out of that work session, it is this resolution that sets forth the measure language, the ballot title, the summary, and the explanatory statement are all part of this resolution that would be approved tonight. If if it is approved, then the next step for the city would be to file it with the city elections official, and then that kicks off a process to post in the newspaper as well as the city's website for a period of time to allow for any ballot title challenges. And then assuming no challenges or that they're resolved, we would then file with the counties to get this put forth to the voters on the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two statewide primary election. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
So before we launch into council discussion, I'll throw it out to the floor again. To Bates, is there anyone in the Zoom meeting or at the poll center who would like to state their opinion either in opposition or favor of this resolution? I'm assuming that's no, if we haven't heard back from Bates. I don't see anybody in the Zoom meeting, so.
Sorry, Mayor. Yeah, no one at the poll, no one at the Zoom.
All right, so then I'll transition to council discussion. Council Pratt.
Yeah, I think I think there's, and from what I'm reading online, I think there's a lot of confusion about how this process works for the city, for ballot measures specifically that change our city charter ordinances. The first way is, of course, the way we're all familiar with, where people go out and collect signatures. I think in Twalton, it's like fifteen percent of the population you have to get to sign. But we have an ordinance. It's thirteen eighty-one dash fifteen, and it also allows two other ways to have a ballot measure for this put on the move forward. The first is we can, as a council, refer something by our choice, and the second is for people that are qualified to vote in Twalton to come to us as they did and ask us to move one, you know, move this forward. So that's what happened to me, given that COVID on top of it. It makes sense that this was the process that was used, and no matter what, I I just want to hit her. This is just putting a ballot measure out there, and it's the voters that are going to decide. It's not us. We're just putting it on the ballot. And then I just, to me as counselors, I think I think we all have a deep awareness that most people, the time it takes to serve as mayor, and we all know that it's a volunteer position. So I just think it's in the best interest of our community in our future to give the voters the option going, you know, into the future to give them the option to make that choice that they want, you know, to just leave it open for a select few more people that would have council experience to serve that second term as mayor and you know, the one thing I've seen that with experience is that there are connections made with other levels of government and other communities, and that can mean a lot of funding for our community. That can mean working together, and it does take time. And so anyway, I just wanted to say my piece about that. I really think we should let the voters decide on this.
Council Sacco.
Thank you, and I I agree with everything that Counselor Pratt mentioned, and I just wanted to add to that. That something that I didn't realize from the outside looking in is that you know, the mayor has has the ability to have a lot more extensive reach than a counselor does. So whereas, you know, I guess not the ability because we have the ability, but the opportunity has has the opportunity to have to create those relationships where you don't necessarily have that opportunity as a counselor. So I have I have seen, you know, some conversations out there where you know, why, why would you have two term limits as a counselor than two as a mayor? It's a very different job with very different, I with very different opportunities as I think as people can see, you know, as we talk about our roundtables, that the mayor is going to a lot, a lot of different committees and meetings that we're not necessarily going to, not that we don't have the opportunity to have those connections, but that reinforces those those relationships that I think are very important to our city to have those when decisions are being made and and it does take that time. So whereas from the outside looking in, I kind of thought that everybody kind of did the, you know, it was it was more of the same, and it's not, as I've seen, being more involved. So I think that it is important that there is an opportunity for a second term. And I also agree with Counselor Pratt that I see a lot of misinformation out there that or language that we're going around something where I see that there's three very clear paths to get something on the ballot. And this is just one of those roads to get to to the ballot and that, again, the the voters are going to decide. Thank you.
Council Sacco, other comments, discussion? Counsel Reyes, then Council Brooks.
Yeah, I agree with my with my fellow counselors, Counselor Pratt and Counselor Sacco, that it takes a lot of energy, information, and and people may not understand. Because I think it was a long, the council before the mayor before we're here for so long that I think people feel like it's a lot, but it's really, that it's a long time, but it's not, it's, they're two different jobs, like Counselor Sacco said, that it takes a while to learn. I mean, I just, I'm still learning and I'm it's my first year, my first term, and I'm still learning so much about about politics and about how to serve the community. So I I agree with having someone that had already started and run again, you know, for for even though they have been counselors before because of the way the, yeah, I I it's just two different jobs. I I see more people going to the mayor than they do to the counselors, and not because, maybe because the mayor's the name is more, I guess, prominent than 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 the city counselors. There were six, it's six of us, so it's kind of hard for people to remember all of us, but they do remember one mayor. So it's easier for them, for the community to go to the mayor and ask questions or, you know, if they have any concerns. So there are different roles, and I and I think that that it takes time to learn things and and I'm I'm in agreement with this this resolution. I do think that there are confusions. People might think that we are assigning people or that we're doing this, and it's not like that. I'm also I just want to clarify that as well. That it's not, we're not selecting the mayor, that it will be the people who will like that and and will determine who they want. But just want to make sure that that's on record, that we understand it. I understand it. And I'm in favor of of this resolution.
All right.
Thank you.
Council Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in agreement with a lot of what's been said. I appreciate the clarification at the top of the conversation around how our ordinances work, and I feel proud to step forward with, on behalf of community members that have come to us with a request. I do the moment of silence every meeting and recognize that this is not a time that I would ever ask our community members to go door to door getting signatures, and I appreciate the concerns that the community members had that came forward with their with those concerns. I've also seen other situations where I've also seen other situations where there was, there's possible lawsuits and other jurisdictions around that kind of the councils not being helpful to their community in this time. And, and then I also want to reiterate that for me, this makes sense. I understand why the people have brought this forward because until I was on council, I didn't realize what the extent of the commitment of a volunteer position of being mayor is. And the fact that we do have term limits and will have term limits. I think to have experience and also understanding of what this role is will help with the stability of governance in our city so that people don't run for mayor with a lot of confidence and without a lot of knowledge and end up in a situation that isn't really sustainable for them and have turnover that we don't need. So there's a lot and we've also talked a lot about relationship building that can happen if you're, if you've, if someone spends some time on council and then moves into the mayor's role and has only one term to make those relationships. I don't believe that that's going to help fund our city well or have our relationships be as strong as they could be. So there's a lot of reasons that I support this, but the real fundamental reason is because it's what the voters asked for when they came to us. And it's for the health and wellbeing of our city and community members. And I don't think it's realistic to have people, it's hard enough to get signatures going door to door without trying to figure out how to do it on the computer. I know that was one of the suggestions and I can't see the rationale in that whatsoever. So thank you.
Other comments? Counsel President Grimes?
Thank you. And thank you for all the thoughtful conversation that's been going on around this particular topic. I do think that it is very necessary that we make some changes to the current term limit measure. I, I think it is very important that the position of mayor is separated from the position of counselors and that any future mayoral candidate is given the opportunity to benefit from being on council for a significant amount of time before becoming mayor. It is a very complicated, it is a very time consuming, it's a very difficult job and the fact that it's a volunteer job and people like Mayor Bubinik step up and donate so much time and so much energy to the city. It's absolutely amazing. And, you know, I think it does benefit the city immensely to be able to have, you know, two terms as mayor. Just when you consider the, the breadth of the position as well as the amount of experience that it takes to do it well to create and foster those regional relationships as our current mayor has done. You know, my only concern and, and my lack of support for the way that we're putting this measure forward is that I really wish that we had not bypassed the normal process, community grassroots process for getting things on the ballot. That's my only concern and that just goes back to, you know, respecting the process and using the same process to have a change put forward as it, the process that we use to get it on the ballot in the first place for term limits when that was passed a few years ago. I just think that you know, being able to do it through a referendum, it would have just been a cleaner process. And I think from the point of view of the community, it would have been seen as a more pure process and a less self-serving process, even though, you know, I don't agree with those assessments personally. So you know, my lack of support is not anything about making the changes or having the voters have an opportunity to make a change. It's more just about the process and it's also absolutely not a comment about how I feel about the job that Mayor Bubinik's done because Frank knows, I think he's done a fantastic job. And I'd be thrilled to have him be our mayor for four more years if the voters decree that. But yeah, my lack of support is just about the process, not about what I hope the outcome will be once voters weigh the merits of this measure next May. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hillier?
Last but not least, I guess. So I really thought about this as everyone here has and I hear all the comments and I am very appreciative that we have a referendum or a resolution that is legal and binding and, and that is what would go forward. And I appreciate for all the reasons that, that everyone has stated, sorry. But I too have just seen the community gather so many times and so many places where at least, you know, it, it seemed COVID was being recognized, but the community was still gathering. And it seems like when, you know, community members have come to me anyway to say, you know, yes, we know we still get to vote on this, but we would have liked to see the process. And so those are the community members, the constituents that have reached out to me that tonight I'm representing. And so it's not because I disagree with the resolution. I disagree with, I personally would prefer to see maybe it extended even more than two years for the mayor, to be honest with you, because I do see just the huge advantage in those relationships. And honestly, our city wins. The longer we have, you know, those, a relationship builder in that position, it's a win for every community member. But I am really, I've struggled with the process and so I like Counsel, Counsel President Grimes am, am not in favor of this particular avenue at this time.
Thank you. I think that's everyone. So I'm just going to say, to me, the ballot measure was for the betterment of the city for experienced leadership, stable leadership. And when we have that, you have a well-run city versus some of the cities in our surrounding area that we can see are sometimes a solid mess. Cause a lack of, lack of experience and lack of guidance. So that's why I think it's kind of, it's important to have this small change to our term limits. And I agree with the other counselors that in ideal situation and no COVID, sure, we would have done the signature thing in a heartbeat. But in my, I mean, most of my mayorship has been dealing with COVID. I mean, I only had a few months without COVID until it hit. And then all I've been doing for, I have what, two, three years, it's a blur now, year and a half, is protecting public health. That was job number one, protecting my, the residents and city employees. So I can't in good conscience go and do, ask someone to go signature gathering. This is a, you know, there's two, there are several ways to get things on the ballot. It always doesn't have to be just one way. We're doing a different process, which is allowed and cities allow, cities around us do it all the time. It's, there's nothing illegitimate about a council placing something on a ballot to be voted on at an election. So I'm in support of it. So those are my two cents. So with that, do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 5582-21.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution Number 5582-21. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Counsel Hillier?
I just, no.
Oh, wait, got it. We got a discussion. Counsel Brooks?
I just want to reiterate that the process is in our charter and that it's not unusual. It's written down in black and white and was brought to us by the voters. So I just want to be really clear on that after the other discussion that could be confusing. Thanks.
You get to vote again, Counsel Hillier. So you're no.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Sacco? Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
All right. Counsel Pratt?
Aye.
Counsel President Grimes?
No.
The Chair votes aye, so that's five to two and the resolution is adopted. Okay. Then we'll now move on to council communications. Any communications from council? Counsel Brooks?
I just want to let everybody know that I sent that email for the report from the city. So you'll have that in your inbox and just want to give you a heads up on that. And just wanted to also again, thank our veterans. And I know that we're having signs go up in people's yards. So give a wave to, to thank you and in a socially, just in a socially distanced way and nice to meet everybody. Thanks.
Any other council communications? Counsel Pratt?
Oh, I'm, just because we're in November and we're, we're close to Thanksgiving and the season of giving, I wanted to point out that I just got my Tuolton Life today and they have several organizations in there you can give to. And then I also have to call one of my favorites, Meals on Wheels people, and they're taking donations to give Thanksgiving dinners to seniors.
Any other comments? Counsel Reyes?
Oh, I just want to say happy early Veterans Day. I have many relatives that serve and have served in the US military. So I just want to say happy Veterans Day to all, all of our community and everyone who have served our country. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? I just got two quick ones. Yes, Happy Veterans Day. We have a very active veterans community here in the city. I do miss the breakfast, but the signs are terrific. And my second thing is with daylight savings, it's getting darker earlier. So please be careful when you drive. For some reason Oregonians prefer dark clothes at night. So be prepared, you know, keep your eyes open when driving. We don't want to have any, anyone wants hurt while we're adjusting to darkness coming earlier. So please be careful when you drive. Look for bikes and peds and all that, because it's, it's way darker way sooner. So please be careful. Anything else? Oh, Counsel Reyes?
Yeah, are people still, those banners are still available or, and if they are, where can they go and get them?
I think they had signs left over. The poll center has some. So get ahold of Sarah at the poll center. Am I correct, Sherilyn? Are there any left? The poll center would have them because I think last time if you called her, she could tell you right away if there's signs left.
I know there were, as of two weeks ago, there were quite a few left and she had plenty. So, yeah. Or just shoot me an email, Counsel Reyes, and I can-
Yeah, just want to let the community, if they're listening, that if they have, if they want to, to go and grab.
Yep. And they're free. They're free to give out to Planton in front of veterans homes, in front of apartment complexes, the house, veterans there. Anybody in there is a veteran, you can put one of those signs proudly. All right. Anything else? Terrific. Well, thank you all for attending tonight. Everyone have a very nice evening. Happy Veterans Day and we'll see you again in two weeks. Have a good evening. Bye bye.